Okay, it is 6:30, so at this time I'll call the, uh, this of the, uh, board meeting to word, please stand.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, board reorganization. Um, alright, so superintendent, superintendent, new board members?
If I could have you three, John, Ma, and you stand. Raise your right hand, we're actually allowed to do this in unison, so just, kinda, start you off, say aye, and then you can search your name, and go nice and slow, like, once we, just, okay, ready? So, aye?
Aye. So, me, back, your parents all must swear that as part of the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Washington, we faithfully discharge the duties of the director, and so, for example, the school district, from one fifty-five, civic counties, based in Washington, for that's my.
Nice. Welcome, so papers you officially have decided, and you can seal the deal, so.
Do I have something from the honor?
Okay.
Is that something you already signed?
No.
Something to do with this process?
This is, yeah, a summary, and you basically, you have a, this is a base, or a, maybe that's what.
Oh, I get to keep that?
Yeah, I get to get a pen when you get on board.
Nice. Alright. Okay, that done? Alright, well, at this time, I'd like to welcome the new board members to the board. Um, looking forward to working with all of these guys, and we need one more, uh, one more board member, so we're looking forward to filling that spot, so, um, I guess, having said that, move right into, uh, uh, reorganization of the board. So, this time, I would call for nominations for board chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to nominate Robert Corbett, board chair.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other, let's see, we need, need to ask for other nominations, I believe. Um, are there any other nominations? I'll ask, uh, actually, three times, are there any other nominations? One last time, are there any other nominations for chairman of the board? Try them here. Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Um, do we need a roll call on that one? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Buddy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And yes, who may. So, motion carries. Okay, uh, nominations for election of vice chair, do I have a nomination for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to nominate Bud Strange, vice chair.
Okay. Um, any other nominations? I'll go three times, any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nomination for vice chair? Alright, if there's no other nominations, did we get a second?
We have a second.
Okay, then it's moved and seconded. All those in favor of Buddy Strange as vice chair, we'll, um, we'll roll call vote, signify by saying aye or yes. Buddy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Okay, motion carries, Buddy Strange will be the vice chair. Alright, nominations for legislative representative, any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to suggest we postpone filling that until January fourteenth, where we have the fifth board member in place.
Okay. Okay, um, are there any, um, uh, issues with that, I wonder? And we have to have it right now, or do you know? No reason?
Well, technically, we're not supposed to do it this year, but the reason we're filling it is because, of a legislative representative.
Right, right. Okay, so.
When do they meet again?
Um, that's a good question. Yeah, I don't know, I, I, I assume that there's probably not a problem in postponing that. I suppose if we had to, we could, uh, we could nominate a temporary or something, if we have to, but, um, I actually don't know whether we need one like that.
So, I, I could make a formal motion, if, oh, okay. You guys, if that's what you want?
Um, I, I think that probably would be proper, let's see, let's do that, it was postponed to the January meeting?
Okay, I, I, I move to postpone the election of legislative representative to the January regular board meeting.
I second it.
Then moved and seconded to postpone the election of legislative representative to the January meeting. Um, I think we could probably just take, uh, a little vote on this, try to make a roll call, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, we'll move that to January.
What can we do?
Do you want them to move if you like, or if you just don't want to stay where we are for now, that's fine, we can record it before you. Okay, so, the board is reorganized now for post, uh, post case, um, so we'll move on to item four, changes or additions to agenda. Do we have any changes? Anything from the board? Alright, um, so I'll need a motion. To approve the agenda as presented?
I move that the board approves the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded, discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item five, consent agenda. Motion, please.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Then moved and seconded, discussion? Post discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we don't have any personnel tonight. Uh, public comment? Okay. Alright, we have one, Chris Norman, superintendent status?
Yeah, is that something you want right this moment, or prefer for discussion?
Um, we could, we could delay this if you would like until we get down to, uh, nine C.
Whatever feels more relevant.
Um, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do that, and we just move on down, it won't take long. Alright, so we're gonna postpone that until nine C. Uh, eight is unfinished business, we have none? Nine is new business, A, acknowledge resignation of Hollis Fletcher, board member, district three.
I move that the board acknowledge a resignation of Hollis Fletcher, director of district three.
I second it.
Then moved and seconded, discussion? Anything from the board? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item nine, B, first reading board policy, sixteen thirty, thirty-two oh seven, thirty-two ten, thirty-two eleven, thirty-two thirty-one, thirty-two forty-six, thirty-two forty-seven, thirty-four twenty, thirty-four twenty-one.
Just a brief overview on these, the way we've been doing this at least is, they start off as new business, they're sent out, they're sent to the board, they're distributed to staff, to start the discussion on these policies, um, so then we have a couple of questions on already, we're checking with our, the school nurse, special policy, thirty-four twenty, and the lax prevention, um, and so, that's kinda how we do that, we get them out a month in advance, so there's time for discussion, and then, they actually come up for discussion and action at the next board meeting, so, we'll see, there's a lot of policies, we haven't had a lot of policies the last couple of months, actually, we've had none, because our governing body, the SNCs, kinda going through a transition phase, so, we kinda did a dump all this month, so, we'll be a little tired to sit for some of those.
Okay, we'll be, they can do a little bit of a favor. Okay, um, nine, C, is superintendent position's status. Um, now, this is the discussion of the board, I would allow Chris to speak here, but, first of all, we must remember now that we cannot get into discussion of personnel, uh, that's for executive session only, so we can only discuss status of the job, okay, does everybody understand that as far as the board members? Okay. Uh, also, probably should kinda stay away from personnel things, Chris, pretty much, right? Okay, so I think I'll have Chris speak first, and then we'll get into our discussion amongst the board members. You have a four?
Okay, so am I allowed to speak about Lisa? When you say personnel, I, I mean, it's nothing that's.
I, I think.
When I say personnel, I mean about performance, uh, and.
I, I think that you're probably fine as far as the public, but as far as the board goes.
Okay, so I, I just kinda, I know that, uh, making a commitment to a superintendent, um, that position and appointment, and the contract and supplements on the table for this board, uh, and, and I know that your preference is to wait until that fifth board member's on the board, too, so they can wait on that, I just wanted to provide some of my own thoughts on my, based on my own experience, um, and based on people that I connect with and their experiences, um, with Lisa, I, 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 my, it's my personal opinion, um, that we have a, a real advantageous opportunity right now to, um, continue with Lisa's leadership in her current acting position by granting her a con, her a con, a contract, um, I know that right now, it's somewhat expensive to go out and do a search, um, maybe anywhere in the neighborhood of seven to ten thousand dollars is kind of the current value on that exercise, um, I know that some past superintendents have not been appointed as a result of a search, so, I'm guessing that within the process of actually appointment, that there is leniency in terms of how the board arrives into this decision to appoint someone, um, in fact, I think you can allow superintendent, there was no superintendent search conducted. So, I, I, I think the thing that I, I just wanted to share is that, me personally, um, I do have some concerns about some of the risks that are involved with the superintendent search process in terms of arriving maybe at a conclusion for the preferred candidate to be existing from some outside community, whether, um, it's in-state or out-of-state, um, I think you begin to take on some risk in terms of, um, their history with their profession, their career, um, I also would be concerned about their commitment long-term to this school district, um, and also, just wondering if this is something like a chapter in life that they're planning on trying to achieve even before they're done with their career, um, I think the advantage that we have with Lisa is that we know a lot about Lisa, um, we, she has the ability to engage the teams evidenced by, um, the team that she has out in the NaSAL youth camp, uh, I don't speak about Lisa specifically necessarily with all the teachers, but I do see a team of employees that seem to be pretty happy to be there, uh, serving the kids that we serve out there, and with some people that have touched upon her name, have spoken highly of her, um, well, like, works hard, committed, dedicated, works so hard that even one of the board members here, a couple of meetings ago, asked, is she okay? Because she is not only acting in the current superintendent role, but also the principal of the NaSAL youth camp, so the fact that she can carry both of those positions simultaneously and keep both of those areas of responsibility afloat is a testament to what she might be able to accomplish if she just had the sole focus of the superintendent position. She lives in our local community, here just down the road, she's type of the community, she grew up in our community, um, she's visible constantly, she's accessible, we see her at events, and we see her locally, um, she knows the NaSAL youth camp and its partnership as it relates to this district, so that's an advantage in terms of replacing her position or any other administrator that might be out at the NaSAL youth camp, she already understands that, furthermore, she's had exposure, of course, to administrative duties and the operations of this school district in its entirety, so that's an advantage. She also knows some of the current issues that are presented before this district, and having exposure to that gives her a head start in terms of being able to, to develop plans to address those areas, um, and I also believe that Lisa is someone through over the course of her career has been led and has been supervised by certain individuals, and she knows what's been effective in terms of her interactions and experiences with some of those people, and what's, uh, effective, and what's ineffective with others, um, so, it's my opinion that there's no need to take a lot of risk by bringing in someone who's unknown and wondering how they will commit to this district, um, how good of a communicator they'll be, how good of a leader they will be, we already have it here, uh, in this district right now, and I would like to see Lisa to be able to develop and share a little bit of what she's been able to accomplish with her faculty at the youth camp and spread that district wide. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this time, um, we'll just open up the discussion to the, to the board, any of the board members would like to lead off, that would be, if I can, anybody that wants to start would be great. Steve?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, well, I just think it's important that we're here right now to discuss this, uh, not only for us new board members to have an opportunity to talk about it, but also to allow the community to have a say in maybe where we may go with this, um, and it's not about, to me, it's not about the individual, it's about how we're gonna structure, uh, superintendent position down the road, are we gonna do a search or not do a search? That was something that was raised, that was something that was actually stated by the previous board, uh, personally, I've been through that rodeo, uh, and it's a crapshoot, you're rolling the dice, uh, and you're spending a lot of money, all of us attended WADA, current, current estimated cost for a search is seven to ten thousand dollars, and, uh, if we were to go down that path, uh, it might be, we might find someone that really looks appealing, but in reality, after one, two, or three years, the board gets to know that person, the community gets to know that person, and vice versa, you know, it's been, how long's it been since Dick Gray, the worst, has left? And how many superintendents have we had? I think it's seven, I think. Not, okay, thank you, Marilyn. I, I, I think we have an opportunity here, uh, maybe to, uh, rectify that issue, provide some stability in this district, so not only the board and community have some, uh, feeling of, uh, stability, but also staff, and, uh, so, you know, I, I would, uh, my, my personal view is to not, not pursue a search, uh, I think we've got someone, a little bit I've been around, uh, what's going on in the school district the last couple of months, uh, the communications I've received are just a lot beyond the pale, uh, compared to what I've had in, in previous administrations, uh, it's, I mean, everything is to detail, and, and it's spot-on, and it's timely, and all of those things are very, very important to me, I, I have a need-to-know, and, uh, and it's here usually yesterday, and, uh, so, uh, that's just my two cents on the process and where we might go from here, but, uh.
Thank you. Uh, Josh?
Uh, well, I'm not sure, uh, what the actual timing we're looking at for making this decision, I guess, my only input, other than what Steve has to say, was, uh, I'd like, uh, comment from the community, and, uh, just like Chris says, comment, and I'd love to hear more of that, and I will solicit, uh, that from people, and I hope that the rest of the board does as well, uh, help us formulate a decision, bring that, back that information for the next board meeting, or, uh, how the protocol is.
I have to add, it's a, I would think it'd be a good thing for us to look here with the staff here, because they also, as the ones who are gonna have to directly work under their new superintendent.
And I, uh, I couldn't agree more, um, with all the board members, actually, um, I've had the opportunity to work with Lisa now for, well, directly, for these six months now, or close to that, and, um, and we gotta be a little bit careful not to cross the line here in personnel, but, um, you know, as, from, from what I see, is we went from situations that just never seemed to heal up, to somebody who, um, is a problem solver, and, and wants to get in there and, and make things right, but, on the flip side of that, I think she's kind of a tough cookie, too, you know, men need be, so, you know, I'm pretty impressed, actually, and I think we're very fortunate, um, to have Lisa right here, basically in house, um, feel my bill, and, you know, to kinda speak to what Steve was saying as far as a search, um, it was more of a, sort of a timing thing, um, I think we sort of brought that up, um, because if you're going to search, you need to search early, you know, and so, if that process was gonna start, we wanted to start early, so we would give the biggest kind of cool as we possibly could, and, you know, whether that was ever going to actually happen or not, we at least needed to get that process started, you know, in the works, if, if that's what we're into, so, um, as far as I'm concerned, um, although, I would like to hear from more community members, staff members, anybody that would like to speak, uh, I'm perfectly fine with that right now, actually, if anybody would like to speak, whether you're signed up or not, because, uh, we really need to hear that, uh, we need to hear it from the staff. Sure.
I've worked with a lot of superintendents, and I've heard a lot of them, and I agree with, she's, she's a problem solver, she's fair, and she makes the decisions, she really, she puts herself in the position of the employee, I mean, I just really appreciate she, and she's a heartbreaker, she, to the point that she drives herself crazy, but she does a really tough, I think it would be very important to have her as superintendent, and just to make sure that she comes up here, and she, they're really big, perfect in work, I don't think you have a hard time having.
Yes.
Um, so, we have ten, and I have to say, I mean, as a teacher, I've worked with a lot of superintendents, um, and even though now I'm with Lisa, I have to say, um, she's very approachable, um, very positive, and she responds, I mean, when I, I've had a short time now, I've been able to, you know, work with Lisa, when I, you know, go to her with a, um, concern or issue, she definitely, um, hears me and, um, responds, so, I think it's very, very important to have the support, and it's not just about me, it's obviously this staff, we're coming to children, and so she is going to be supported, I can see that, you know, I've already seen that demonstrated, she's very, very listening, she was called point of interest, so, that's very, very important, she's already demonstrated that she cares, and she's.
Thank you. Really, I'd just like to say, it is one of the board's most important jobs, in hiring her, and, uh, and I don't know, you know, what our end of the day, I don't know what we put down, uh, a lot to deploy, so, we screwed up, dodged our eyes, and made sure that everything is legal, but, uh, with that said, um, Ms. Nelson's been my boss at the youth camp, and she's been a little for the job, and, and has moved this board in a lot of areas, and, uh, um, we, it seems to be running smoothly. Um, let's go to the back, that, the Ryan first, and we'll move forward, like, pretty much, everything that everybody said, uh, we've got a costly portfolio for this, we threw a few superintendents there, and the very first one I have is probably best, I'd say so far, Lisa's thrown in a very tough situation, and I think you'd all be that kind of nuts not to hire, she's been working for six months, and things have gotten, she decided you better, uh, you've got a trial run already, you can see what she's done, you guys all mentioned it before, it's a crapshoot, and, uh, superintendents are what you're gonna get, you have bells and whistles, and when you hire somebody, and you're gonna see the real person, a few months after that, you've already, you haven't had, you won't have to deal with any of that, you already know what you're getting, it's something that you know personally, all this, the staff here, the pilot, or, uh, that's just my own opinion, obviously I'm biased, I mean, at least I graduated with her, but she's very approachable, communications improved a hundred percent the last three years, Steve, you already mentioned that, you'll get an email and everything, you know, and, you know, lights out and everything, and so, um, I just think, you're a board member, you're standing up there, and you're listening, yes, and you're, so listen to me, more responses from staff, I mean, you're a superintendent, you're a guy right there.
It's back in the room, and shoot.
I just want to second everything that's been said, as a staff member, a leading member, I enjoyed working with Lisa, and while, when you go to her, was, I worked with her summer at the youth camp, and when you go to her with a question, she doesn't always commit to you, but she does listen to what you say and give you her opinion, to the extent you give it, and I just always felt listened to, and the times I've seen her here at the school as acting administration, when the other administrations were out, she was she's always composed, supported herself very well, and is a good presence here. And I appreciate somebody local who's invested in this community has the best long-term interests of the school and not a short-term agenda, is what I felt was happening in the past. So I feel like the communication increased, which was a huge issue in the last administration. And I think that, yes, we could get somebody amazing from out there. But I think we already have somebody wonderful. We can see here.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the process works. And I do agree with the statement that was made by the board made of it. This is something we need to work very quickly on because, you know, time is short. But if the board is gonna solicit input from the community, how would that be done?
Well, I mean, it could be done different ways, I suppose. We could, you know, we don't have anything really set up right now to be able to respond on our website, right?
I'm not sure how you can do that in like a survey monkey or something like that.
Yeah, or something like that.
I know some people would rather set one up for you.
You know, I think that right now, we're probably looking for ideas on how to do that. And, you know, I think we're fortunate to have a pretty experienced board right here to possibly solve like that situation. So I would, I would, I would look to the board here to come up with some ideas on how we might do that. If anybody has some good ideas on how we could possibly do that. Or Steve, or Josh, or anybody. But, you know, other than coming to the board meetings, we don't have anything set up right now to be able to, other than going out and talking to the community, you know, and talking to everybody that you can, visiting staff at the school.
I know you can email a board member, but.
Yeah. We're actually, yeah, we're actually in the process of sort of changing that and getting actual emails to the school for each board member. And I couldn't, you know, it might be just me. Okay. So I think it might be absolutely interesting for the board.
I'm not saying that with, with any thought of objecting to moving quickly on this and not doing a search. I'm just saying that's not a board community.
Right, right. And I totally appreciate that. And I, I don't know if we're really gonna get any different response, but it is very valuable to know what the community thinks. We'll be talking about that a little more, I'm sure, in the future as to how we can, you know, for right now, we're in the community and talk to people. You know, it seems like, you know, there's never really enough time, I know for myself, to get up here and be able to talk to staff. It's tough, you know, and each board member has a little different situation. But for me, with running my business and other things that I do, it's a little bit difficult to get up here when I should. But I definitely will be getting up here soon. Any thoughts on that from the board as far as how we can?
Well, I have a thought on what Chuck's concern was about, you know, getting feedback from the community. My thought was that we're doing it right now. And that's what I was hoping we might, by having an agenda item, with it being on the website, people are being, are much more aware of what's going on at the school because of that. I was hoping that maybe we'd give a little more interest tonight to where we connect with more folks. But, you know, I, I think from a timing standpoint, I would be reluctant to do anything. And, you know, we have nothing on the agenda at this meeting to deal with this issue. We have a vacant board position that needs to be filled, and that person needs to have a voice. So I, you know, we need to get the whole board in place. And then from there, I think maybe we can have a better idea of where we might go. But I, I think it's extremely important, and I very much value what our community thinks. And I do not want to assume anything. I want to make sure that once the decision's made, that it's, you know, we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, and everyone's comfortable with where we're going. And we have the support of the community and staff.
You know, I think that possibly between now and the January meeting, maybe we should schedule a community night here at the school. And get it on the website, you know, get it in the papers, do whatever we need to get it to the people that we'd like to hear from, more people, yes. We definitely want to get it right this time. You know, I think that we're all pretty much on the same page, and I think this room is too, that we probably have the right person in the room right now. We want to make sure that the community's on board with that. I think that our biggest goal as a board is to be as transparent as possible to the community, to the staff, anybody that wants to know anything that's going on at the school. And I think that's the best way to operate. So that's our goal. I don't mean to speak for you guys, but I know we've talked about it before, and I think that holds real true. That, you know, we want to start fresh here and new. And, you know, I think that having a major community night at the school, if we can work that out with all the games and everything else that's gonna be going on, right?
Half-term.
Half-term. I'm gonna run down the good, the bad.
One, the timeline's limited.
You know, obviously, it's gonna need to be after, right? So thoughts on that from the board? Did you have a convention, does that sound like something we should do?
I think that's great.
Okay, unless, so maybe we could explore some days to do that? Try to work it out with, you know, home games and whatever else is going on? And see if we can come up with a night and.
This is just the end of what, not like an interview thing, like question and answer, right?
Right. Well, we'll decide that.
Yeah. Might be six, still.
Still. And so, Chris?
I just want to add one more thing I failed to mention earlier. And something that I think of often is how directly tied even the superintendent position is to the learning experience of the student. When I think as a parent of a kid who's in middle school now, being, receiving instruction from his teachers. And I think how important it is for teachers to feel supported and heard and comfortable and excited of coming to work every day, and how that translates to effective instructions so that my kid has the best learning experience. That comes through the type of supervision and interaction they have with the administrative team, including the superintendent. And when there's a compromise in that style of leadership, then you begin to experience hardships and problems that in, probably indirectly can begin to affect the student's learning experience. And so with that being said, I think that's how important it is to not take too many chances to take advantage of the opportunity that we have in front of us.
I think, you know, if we're gonna do a community night, which it sounds like we probably will, I think it's really important that, you know, anybody that's here and, you know, is of the same thinking that most of the people that are here, we need to get people to show up. Whether it's staff, board members, anybody that's in the audience here. Talk to the people that, because everybody has certain people that you talk to daily, whatever, weekly, whatever, that, that the rest of us don't. And if we can get as many people there as possible, I think that's gonna be huge. Okay. Anything else? Oh, yes?
I just had a question. Sorry, I'm over, I almost picked that. But at the next regular meeting, then, would you have on the agenda the hiring of a superintendent?
It's a possibility. You know, I, I can't say for sure that we will. But I would say that there's a pretty good possibility of that. And I'm not gonna speak for the whole board here, but, you know.
I mean, if you want some advertising, you're trying to get four people to come in and discuss it. If you're gonna do that, I'll put it in the paper you're gonna do that, you know.
Well, and I think that it's, it's probably important.
And it's a little premature for that.
I think it is a little bit premature.
We don't have a whole board here. And I'd be reluctant to make that statement until.
That's everybody all jammed for time. That's a very good point. I think, you know, right now, we're probably okay. We get our new board member in here in the near future, get that board member involved in this. And it kind of depends on if that new board is in place at the next board meeting. I would think so, I hope so. And how close the community input meeting, the community night meeting is to the board meeting. So if possibly, if we need to, we'll have time to get together at a workshop and maybe go over what we've learned from our community night, possibly. So we may need a little time to digest what we're seeing. Does that answer it all, you know?
Almost do.
I mean, that's kind of round and round, right? Right back to the same spot. Anything?
What's the process far as, okay, let's say we're all in agreement tonight, and maybe decide we're gonna hire Lisa for the negotiation, putting the contract in place. Does that come ahead of the offer? Does it come after the offer? How does that work?
As far as the negotiation portion of that?
Well, I was thinking when you said we could offer her a position, because earlier this next meeting.
And again, I have to agree with Steve. I think that would be a little premature. We probably should have a full board. And I think that's very doable by next board meeting, it sounds like, right? We have candidates.
Is there a window for advertising for a vacant position?
I haven't found a window, but it wasn't a paper last week. So it runs for two weeks.
For the board position?
Yes.
I mean, I think you should let it go at least for two papers worth, so to speak.
So run it two weeks and see where we're at.
Tuesday, Wednesday, we have the papers come out. Plus, it's on our website, the school Facebook, I think everybody will, it's on the paper for that matter. Seems like it should be at least a couple of weeks.
You know, from, from that point, you know, I've been through a lot the last year, but I actually haven't been through a new superintendent hire. So I'm gonna be looking for guidance from Steve, I believe he's been through. You know, make sure that we're doing it properly.
But to answer your question, the way I've always seen it work, the way that I know it works for other superintendents is first day, what they worded is that they offer the job pending, you know, successful contract negotiation. So the offer comes before the negotiations.
So once we offer the job, then we negotiate.
Which is basically how mine was done. It was a little bit of a preference, but yeah. That's, that's the ones I've watched and seen.
It'd be somewhere that I need to work to, you know, as a board.
And putting the new paper on the board, would we have a special meeting? Or would we do it ahead of our regular board, how that process?
We could do it at the start of the next board meeting. First thing, just like we just did. We could do an interview to start with. Depending on how many candidates we have. If we have more than one, then we'll have to do those interview process. And probably go into executive session and make that, make discussion in executive session without make that decision. I believe this, we'll have to check, make sure. There's only certain things that we can go into executive session for. I believe that's why I'm.
Or you can do a special meeting before that.
So the position has ran for one week now, is that correct? So we need to look at, whether it's our C N W, you need to look at how, how that position is filling.
Appropriate media rules.
What is appropriate media rules? Can you help us with that one?
I thought appropriate was two weeks.
Well, I think the standard is gonna be used in the past is essentially what the school district does for other positions. And a two or week, two or three week period, I mean.
And I think that varies though sometimes because you get a bunch right away, and then you're trying to get that position filled, so.
Now, regarding your point, Bob, about maybe doing it for the regular board meeting, with my chance to, I would recommend that we do it on a separate night.
So I think that right now, we need to be running that for two weeks.
Is this Tuesday, Wednesday, the second time it'll be out, or is it?
Okay, so.
That'd be your second week of session.
Okay, so is that the board's desire that you want to run it for two weeks, and then we'll close it, and we can schedule a special meeting to appoint that board position? That's, is that the board's desire?
Yes. I'd say yes.
Okay, and so, so that will be ran two weeks, when?
Well, this Tuesday, Wednesday will be the second time it has appeared in the E B O and the council.
Do we want to give it a few days to respond after that?
So the deadline would be Friday? This coming Friday? That sound fair? So you have a deadline of Friday, but.
Twenty, yes.
Okay. Yeah, a special meeting though, it's gonna be come in here for 10 minutes and then you go.
However, depending on how many.
Twenty meetings.
How many applicants are.
And sometimes people try to do other orders of business, but it's not normally a sequential board meeting. So, you know, I kind of recommend not doing it in their business.
We probably won't have.
Sticking to the special business. January agenda, I can tell you, really thick busy. There's a lot of things scheduled again. I'm sure some people might be putting their presentation off a month, but have a try to have a group come in every month and do a little something, even regular activity wise. And they're sort of stacking up. So if people are planning on this, you know, I don't like to let them off or just carry. I mean, I'm just saying, January might be long.
Okay, well, we can, we can do it, all right? We might have to have coffee or something, but. Okay, so, all right, so long as we're all clear. That board position is going to be Friday, the 20th, all right? And we will, do you want to set a special meeting right now for the following week?
How's the holidays gonna impact that?
Probably, it impacted pretty good because Christmas is Wednesday, correct?
Be in January.
So we'll have to go into the first week of January. I don't have a calendar.
Well, I do, but once I kick off, that's gonna mess up all my. Does anyone else have a calendar? I think January is, I'm gonna have to.
Everyone has to get a calendar, actually. No, I'm just.
I've got all the logings, so I need to do.
See here.
January 7th is Tuesday.
Okay, so, right, the 7th is, is Tuesday. Board meeting is the 21st. So obviously, we, we don't really have to go Tuesday, but we, we like to kind of stick with Tuesdays.
In January?
I'm in January, yes. So the 7th, is that workable for the board? Steve, buddy?
I'd have to actually check and see.
Well, what, what is it gonna need to be workable for?
Well, it's true.
How many applicants we have?
One.
What's your schedule?
Bob, we can set a date outside of board, right?
Yes.
You can call a meeting.
Yes.
So I would recommend, let's wait for the term of the announcement of, and, okay? Know how many applicants we've got.
It's a little, it's a little bit trickier, you know, outside the meeting.
Can we just give you the authority to, to set that up?
I'm sorry?
Can we just give you the authority of the board to set that special meeting up and hold it class?
Ah, you can, yes. So do we want to stick to a Tuesday night? So we're either looking at the 7th or the 14th and see how that works out?
I'd say make as much as possible, send yourself to a date.
Okay.
We can know right away after the 20th. We can know right away after the twentieth. I mean, by Friday this meeting comes to a conclusion.
Right, I mean.
Short meeting.
Short meeting, okay. All right, well, we'll set that date then outside of this board meeting.
Well, I think once we know who the applicants are, if we're only at one, it's gonna simplify things.
Right.
But just make sure that they're available for any meeting.
And we'll work that out. And then, and then I'll have Lisa email the board with that date and make sure that that works out. Okay, anything else on that? Anything else from the board on superintendent position status? Anything else from the community? All right, thank you. Business office report.
Okay, Ron is unavailable tonight, so briefly go over this slide of week, I need to report this a while ago a few days. Gives us some numbers on top. See up here, population, about a hundred months, September, October, November. And then you drop down, youth gap population, which I usually report on separately anyway. You made a fund balance for each month, September, October, November. I'm gonna shoot down to the bottom here to kind of keep it in mind. Now, remember, if you haven't been to the last few years, the recent fund balance is six hundred twenty-eight thousand, six thirty-six, starting in November. That OSBI gave us money, weren't entitled to have. And they made their corrections in January, so if you're looking at this now and then looking at it in January, it's going to be a hundred thirty thousand less. Because they responded personally as if we had a bond in place. We don't, so that money's coming out. Move on down to the bottom here, it's gonna be a bit dizzy, but you need to quickly. So in November, the end of fund balance is five thirty-four, oh seventy-two.
Do you know, like, notice the, at the top, you have the enrollment for the brick and mortar? It was quite a variation in one month that was, two seventy-eight.
I'm not there yet.
Yeah, you are.
Eight twelve, two seventy-eight, two seventy-two.
Went down six and then went back up almost two seventy-eight. That is a normal from what I've looked at before.
No, it isn't. I don't know if you're new or from the top. Just the enrollment difference between September and October. I don't know if running start by month and out of there.
It is, but you have to stop the running start.
Yeah, three, same colleges have our, of the ghost wing. So October, you know, three of the kids were running start, there's another three difference.
So.
Didn't actually prove a game.
So September's count was with running start in this building? The people that were of running start or going to be running start in this building? And then in October, they were in running starts that time, correct? So then in November, we're almost back up again?
They're still in running start, that's new kids in.
Okay.
But that doesn't account for all of them, because three of them have been running start. So I know one gal who can cap them in, and I'm not sure about the others.
Running starts, three and three.
We don't back them up, they're actually not at the school.
Typically, the C B A climbs until about February.
Sometimes by May, by May, they start dwindling out because they finished their classes and their credits. So you'll see it dropping by.
I was just gonna say, I know that C B A this year cut, stopped enrollment after in October. And they won't allow them to enroll again until second semester. So that's good, shouldn't have caught you.
Well, the way the state is doing, if a student starts a class and then drops it, then they count all these dropouts against students. They go get their G E D, that's a dropout too. It's kind of quite figured out why it is the way it is.
Anything else? Or you move on?
Okay, ask for a report. Skip, man, C B A report, we're gonna skip. I got some enrollment numbers, I'll show you on my slide, how we're gonna do the population last in all of those programs. Okay, if you're up.
Okay, so back in, twenty eighth of November, the booster club provided another opportunity for the science center man who, and her grades came through twelve. And this year, the focus was on engineering. And they, so they had an assembly to all the students talking about all of that types of engineering, the chemical, electrical. And then this area was then utilized for kids who engage in hands-on activities that had to do with engineering. So that they're building, making bridges and whatnot. So it was a great opportunity to help supplement the science programs that we have because we don't have a lot of opportunities here. So, you know, we appreciate the booster club giving out the funds because it's quite expensive. And then I wanted to let you know that Diane Bennett had her sixth, seventh, and eighth graders participate in the V F W What Patriotism Means to Me essay. And it's pretty impressive, the vets from the Long Beach branch provided a one hundred dollar check for first place, seventy-five for second, and fifty dollars for third place. And we had winners in all three areas, in seventh and eighth grade. And in sixth grade, we only had two winners, but that's because the rest chose not to do it. So then it's down to fifty dollars. But anyways, I think it was a great opportunity for our kids to apply their writing skills. And it was amazing, the essays that our students wrote were very, very impressive. And they're now going on to a district level in January, and potentially they could qualify for state. So we're kind of excited to see what happens. So we had, okay, this is my newsletter, we had the, okay, so I can't.
I shouldn't have.
Paul Burns Guard, and Cole Norman, both, I believe, got the one hundred dollar, the first place. And then Jacob Eaton, also in the seventh grade, got the seventy-five dollar. And Samantha Ward made, rather, fifty dollar, Austin tries in with seventy-five dollars. But it's impressive that, you know, because he's all goes well. The kids overall did a great job, and it's just nice to see them stepping up and their writing skills.
I didn't know there was some penny, I wouldn't have done that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And not right, when you think about it, right? This is the first time ever that our kids have actually entered that essay contest. Very impressive. Last up.
Are the essays in your newsletter?
Are the essays in your newsletter? The essays are not, but the winners and the photographs of them are. And then actually, the V F W was going to put it in the Observer. But he indicated that it was going to be after, I believe, after the district level orders were announced. They didn't want to put several hundred questions, so it should be appearing, I think, sometime in January. Very, very impressive. Then I wanted to let you know that we have a messenger service, I'm not sure if you know about that. It's a call-out, it's like a reverse nine-one-one. And all the numbers for student staff are all loaded in. And so on a late start a day, or say, for example, on an in-service day, I would call, make a, record a message, and then send it out to all our families. And it's worked for the past couple of years anyways, I think. No one has ever said, with the exception of a few people, how I found out was staff that said, hey, I didn't get my call this morning. And then we'd go in and see, and then the report that I got that says, hundred, you know, phone calls were answered, a hundred and ten went to a machine. Three were disconnected or whatever. And so through that process over the past couple of years, you could, you know, do a problem solving. Well, this year, all of a sudden, I started getting this, you know, flood of phone calls. And people showing up in the office saying, hey, I didn't get my call this morning, I didn't get my call this morning. And Lisa was in that too. So I went into the messenger system, which I had already been on, and saw that, hey, you know, all these people got their calls, these went to the machines. And here it was working, and so I called the messenger service. And I said, oh, no, no, it's, it's working, everything went out, and this is our report. And I said, okay, where's the problem? Well, the phone company. So I called the phone company, and the phone company said, well, it's a line distance carrier, it's Sprint. So then Sprint's going, no, it's that, and so this started happening. And, you know, so then Lisa and I talked about it, I spent like four hours trying to problem solve this, going all over trying to figure out what's going on. And what I did was I divided up, separated the school staff from the students, and sent out two separate messages. And then I had people coming in the next time saying, oh, I got my call, I got my call, oh, wait, it's working. And I started getting emails, well, I didn't even get our call. So it's not very efficient right now. So you can hear people say, hey, we're not getting calls, we're not being notified. We have several ways to find out about school delays or closures now. We are now wrapped up running with Komo and King, so they're advertised, they're actually showing it online. And the last closure last week, they actually announced and self-repeated themselves. You know they're doing that, and thank you Lisa for doing that. K M U N on the radio is now advertising for us. The hotline can be called, that's our four eight four seven one two one, option five. Deb puts the recording on about five thirty every morning. And Facebook is up for running, Mrs. Jill Mortage, she'll be there as soon as she gets the information, she puts it on. And it's also on the district website, so there are many, many ways to find out. So if you hear, to direct them my way, I'd be happy to let them know, but I also put it in my newsletter that there are other ways and all the people to. Oh, you know that. And then we have an opportunity to go by the classroom doors in the high school and elementary, and I have a few of that in here. They've all been decorated by staff, it's kind of the, we do an activities monthly, as their heads have stepped up and helping to promote just staff working together. And so a lot of the classroom doors have been decorated for the holidays, and we have contests. And this room just on the other side, it was first place, Mr. Wilson, and we're in second place. And Mrs. Smith down at the end, first grade, is in her place. So it's impressive, the creation that we've had. And then our justice program is tomorrow night at seven o'clock. If you drop.
Thank you.
Still, again, online, actually, since I did this slide at the end of last week, about eighty-seven right now. We applied for and received twelve thousand more dollars of Carl Perkins vocational funds. So that'll actually help me out a couple of periods to our daytime program. Ruby's going to switch over from B E, which another teacher will take that class, and we're gonna add back traditional design class that we have this summer. I just really enjoyed that class, so all in all, it will result in about three more periods in the morning to our basic schedule. And speaking of Ruby, he's actually here, and he has a, can give us a brief overview of opiculture, horticulture programs that we have at the youth gap. Some interesting information, so you have to look at its age and your age.
Yeah, all right, Ruby grew up. So I've been here for eighteen years in the district, maybe nineteen, and teach math, opiculture, horticulture, computer science. Do a little textbook, community management, so I'm gonna just cover these two classes that I teach. And these are both classes that we actually put on hiatus for a whole year last year. And then we kind of brought them back in to play this last summer when we got more funding. So at one point in time, the camp had about a hundred and sixty kids, and we had lots of funds, we had lots of vocational programs. And as we've shrunk in smaller and smaller, now that we've got only eighty students, we've had to pare back the programs. With that vocational funding that Ms. Nelson mentioned, we've been able to bring back these programs, which is a good thing. So this first class is horticulture. And the classes there are six to eight students, they're not very big, real hands-on, you do have a textbook, and you do, you know, rainy days and days of work, hard working outside, you do bookwork. And students are hired in the class because they benefit the camp by helping to unify it, so they get paid for tuning. And one student's hired to help water and do a lot of maintenance in the greenhouse on the weekends when the class is done. So we have a small garden, and you grow vegetables, and we've kept to a couple of major crops. Home crop is peat because it grows so well right here. And we give that to the kitchen, and the kitchen goes and feeds it to the students. We have small crops of tomatoes and corn and a few other things. In the greenhouse, we've experimented a couple of different years with full production of lettuce to the camp. This year, we're doing some mixture of lettuce and cabbage and strawberries. We've got some peas growing there right now, just kind of see what happens, pretty much cold weather crops. But real hands-on, and lots of fun. So greenhouse plant starts, we grow a lot of, a lot of starts, this is lettuce and kale growing. This is about half the greenhouse, like we're seeing in that big picture there. We try to do everything real and expensively, so we do everything, all of propagation from your seeds or cuttings or divisions. And so this would be an example of seeds. And here are big Dahlia tubers, and we'll divide those up and separate them. And either spread them out in beds, or we'll sell them in a cellar. All right, so we have some seasonal projects that we do. We do a pumpkin carving, I think one of the students who's in this picture said he never even carved a pumpkin before when he went through the active. Scoring dahlias over there, currently making Christmas wreaths. Some of the students are taking those home and bringing them to the parents. And like, next level, starts improving our yields with four or five apple trees, so we'll keep those turned up. Other things we work on is reworking flower beds. We have a nice trail that loops around the school, maybe it's a quarter mile. And that's one of the bridges that needs to be repaired, so we'll make it work. And that last picture on the corner was a picture of, excuse me, bringing in the class some seeds that he has gathered from his apples and oranges. So that we can plant them and get a teachable moment when we learn how to peel the orange seeds so that they actually propagate a lot quicker. The greenhouse pretty much takes care of itself, the only issue we have is trying to keep things in the carnival. And we're working out a better heating system right now, it works on electric. And I know the public school uses gas, we purchased a gas heater probably three years ago and didn't get it put in place. We're finally kind of getting some points there to get a tank for us and switch over to gas. And then those other pictures there were pictures of barrels. And we're gonna rework all our tables for the beddings of the plants, and we're gonna put those barrels, you know, blackened. So they'll give us solar heat from the water that's stored in there, and so that will cut down on some of our heating costs. But that's an in-play project that may take several years to go through. Any questions on horticulture?
How big an area are you guarding?
Well, there's five, six, I mean, there's six, seven acres on the camp, so every building has some landscaping. So you kind of pick and choose which one you want to work on. The garden area is pretty small, I mean, it's, you know, it's like half the size of this room. And the greenhouse, I wanna say it's fifty by a hundred feet. But like I said, every, every bed on campus that we work on. The hardest part is that the camp hasn't had the funding for what really makes landscape. what really makes landscape bed look good is purple. So that's, um, it's been tough because the kids don't look at it too much. So we do go, we do it, we go in and take it all apart and start from scratch in the camp. Any other questions on work?
I'd love to come up and see it, actually.
Yeah, okay. Well, we want to have him come out and see it. Um, the aquaculture class, same thing, six to eight kids, usually different kids. Um, this is a program that we started way back with Hank Nelson and Ken Mo worked on this program. Um, we hire students, this student does work every day, seven days a week. Feeds in the morning and feeds in the evening, uh, fish. Um, and also checks to make sure everything is A-OK. You don't have any issues with not enough water or those types of things. Um, our textbook covers everything from history all the way down to careers and it's all kinds of things. But in terms of aquaculture, from raising frogs and alligators. Um, it's interesting how you can take that applicability to regular farming. Which is, you know, how much you feed a fish is one-to-one ratio. Food to growth versus, uh, um, a pig is one-to-three. So every three pounds of food, you get one pound of growth. And a fish is one-to-one. So it's really quite an amazing thing. Um, so we mainly raise rainbow trout. And, uh, we have an agreement with the state of Washington to get 5,000 trout for them every year. And, uh, we raise them from high stage to one and a half pound trout. And this is what we did last year. And I said that we didn't have a program. We ran a program through my, uh, my, uh, science class, which was, uh, physical science. Quite anything to do with aquaculture, but we made it work. And it's kind of a camp honor. And, uh, and we raised 100 trouts, three to four pounds. And they were two years old. And those, uh, they look like these big ones down here. And those went to the Black Lake tournament. This year, we're, uh, we kept the 300 trout through summer. This was a tough year for us because there was real low water. We had a really big drought this year. And, uh, we raised 300 trout. And we still have those trout, they're 45 pounds. And they will be released, not just in Black Lake this year to be released, but to radar those if you want. We also have, uh, another program that the Fish and Wildlife is working with us on. Uh, and that is to raise boho salmon. We can get 50,000 eggs a year. And we raise them from fertilization all the way to when the alba diverge. And, uh, and we take them to Johnson Creek, which is where Arnie's ponds are. They were before the school. They were grown there. And, uh, there's been a whole bunch of restoration work down there. Can't really see it in this picture, but there are like chains holding some of these logs in place. So there's nice habitat for the fish. And that's a picture of the, of the area where the alba will get released. Um, in the past, we've done all kinds of different ways of doing this. We've done it with remote site incubators. We've done it with trays that sit in the water. And, uh, we moved to the process of raising the eggs at the NACEL camp. And then we just transport them once they're ready to start feeding. And then we get to still haul these lots of salmon. We fed them, they do a good lot.
Are they going into the ponds?
They, we put a few in the pond, but mainly into the creek and then the lower area there below the ponds.
And why can't you feed them?
Well, you can't feed them because then you're, then you'll consider them live.
It's called nutrient enhancement.
Right, we can feed them, we can feed them dead salmon. We can throw out that salmon.
Oh, you can't give them fish food?
We don't give them fish food.
I see, okay. That the hatchery is actually looking for some places to expand some RSI work that I've been working on.
Right.
And that pond site is one of the sites we're talking about. We've just been no contact with landowners or anything. But I think I might maybe direct it to you. Uh, so there's some coordination there, if that's all right?
Yeah, at least that they know that we are already doing some things there.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and then we've been doing this for 15 years. I mean, we've been putting salmon in that area for 15 years. And, um, I haven't talked to this archer recently to find out how many fish are coming out that way. But, um, I'm interested to know. All right, go ahead, Lisa, next slide there. So, uh, the last two years, we started a new thing. And, and what this did was it did two things for us. One is it brought fertilization process right to the camp. And the plus for us is it's getting really hard to get the kids off campus. It used to be I could take a station wagon, three kids in the car and drive it down hatchery. It was really easy to get off campus. Now it's much harder to get off campus because there's less staff. And anytime we take more staff, it does create a risk of, it's, 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 so. So we've co-opted with this, uh, R and D group out of a story called Red Zone. Roger Warren and Todd Jones. And they've created this fog incubation system. And we go to the NACEL hatchery, we get, the day we go, we show up, we get 20 pairs of salmon. And we get the eggs in the, the milk. And we put it in plastic bags. And we haul it in a, in a cooler. Take them to camp and beat up the kids and mix the eggs there. And, uh, once we mix the eggs, uh, we then do, uh, not from down, I just call it iota four, which is a, an iota. Which then gets out the bacteria that's put in the eggs. And then we let the eggs sit in this iota fours for a bit. And then it gets rid of the bacteria on the eggs and rips it off, rinse them off good. And we'll put them in these trays. And they sit in the fog for about 45 days until they're at the i-stage. So we get from fertilization to i. And the kids will get the opportunity to pick the eggs right on campus. And, uh, and then we'll keep them, we actually have a hopper instead of this. We can either put them in the trays or we can put them in a hopper. And, um, they'll stay with us and then we'll take them in a big, a couple of work camp. And then, um, we'll move them to the area up there. And so this has been, this has been fun to have expertise folks come to the camp. And, um, it's been a good learning experience for us. It's been good for those guys, R and D's, they're learning a lot. We've got some unique situations that aren't perfect. We've had the, I think the first year, we had just this box. And then they moved to something that they call a chiller, which means it chills this part and keeps it colder. This last year, they added this filter in, so it filters the water ahead of time. And, uh, we did have some loss this year. It still, the bacteria in the water that we have. Normally a hatchery does formaldehyde. And, uh, this operation is supposed to make it so you don't have to use for them. That's their big plus. But we did still have some A-plus because of, uh, this is, this is your group in there. And so this next year, I think we're going to do ultra-violent links. In addition to the, so it's just a good experience for us to check that out. Go ahead, you're on the next slide. So this is, uh, just that process from a couple of years ago. And there's that hopper we talked about. The kids make their own, uh, make their own things and they're fertilizing the eggs there. Um, and then we've had some hatchery field trips. We've had one so far this year. But in the past, uh, the kids have gotten to collecting the eggs and milk, trying to spawn the salmon. Um, they've done winding and chopping the fish tails off for fish enhancement. Um, sort of fish fin clipping. Um, the camp has a potlatcher here. They collect salmon from the Easton Hatchery for that. And, um, we cut down some restoration and cut down the gold vein. We've actually taken salmon live and put them in some strings to go swan. So it's been a pleasure to chat. Um, we've got a couple aquariums at the school. We raise duckies live. Some kids can see live birth. And we have salmon in the classroom tanks. So, you know, where our salmon are in the trays, we can see everything happening. And we'll be putting salmon eggs in this, this cold tank, which is at 45 degrees. Uh, you can see them hatch right there with their eyes. Um, other products we do is a fish dissection. And we have to deal with emergencies. This is some, then going back to the last quarter, this is just some of the native things we find in our creeks there. There's a sculpt bin on entry and a broad ad. Kids like to find all kinds of things that our creeks are out here. And, uh, that's a picture of something we just added in an automatic fish feeder share. So that's a big plus. Um, emergencies, uh, every time it rains or anytime there's not enough water, we kind of get into an emergency situation. And then one of the things we teach the kids is to step up to the plane and to, to have an action plan for it. And, uh, they do a good job. Um, we've got several different water sources you get to, get to choose from. There's a couple of springs that we use when the creek's dirty. And, uh, that usually ensures our fish are pretty safe. Okay, all right, last slide. Uh, this is, this was just from the last couple of cold days. It was just kind of fun. We were looking at that the other day and I thought I'd refer you guys. But what was interesting about this, this one here, this one here, basically the same ones in Fahrenheit. Inside the fogger temperature. So that was inside the incubator. And you could see that the fogger stayed about 37 degrees. So it never got to freezing where the eggs were. But the outside water got almost 32 degrees. So it almost got to freezing like 17 degrees outside. And then this last one, you can see that here, 17 degrees, the water is almost 32, but the foggers, the eggs are good. So any questions on the aquaculture front? There's a lot I should have replied. Feel free to stop by. We have afternoon classes, so.
Yeah, I would tell you. So afternoon classes?
Uh, our class is, uh, 2:00, about 2:10. About 2:10 and, and horticulture's at 1:00. And, uh, the hatchery, Miss Hatchery provides, you know, all the food for us. And provides the eggs, provides the, um, they transport the fish for us. We need to go with them. Um, they provide the, pretty much everything. They're providing the buckets for our greenhouse. They provide the automatic fish feeder. So it's been a real good relationship that, uh, that we've built over the years. And the U Camp kids working there, the hatchery, you know, also helps us process.
Okay, with me, uh, I'm just trying to show you a snapshot of our moment. Not really a snapshot, it's actual numbers and trying to get a pattern. Most of it broke there, you see, it's due to the virtual pool. We did, as Karen was talking about earlier, uh, hatchery makeup is built into our calendar for the family brother. And we have a hospital, two of them. So I'm going to break with me one day. I hear that brother reports for January, February, cold. So that might be in the hole by the time it's over. Um, I should explain the process for school delays, I won't elaborate on that. But we have added four more, uh, means to communicate those. Really frustrated about the call-out system because that seems to be working pretty much non-stop. You know, people can be reliant on it. Now, hold on, this is frustrating for us. And we keep going, they're not giving the calls. I don't know if we're going to have a solution for it, but. We got with that. Um, actually, that was it. Um, we did talk about this already, so, um, that would be it. And I'm trying to set up a board workshop and, um, everywhere I ate was the next Saturday that the, the alba department in the past would be available. I realize that's, um, six weeks out. So I don't know if that's a date we want to keep. We were hoping to get the fifth work and run the place, you know, before doing that. If we want to stick with that date or, I, I think it would be important to not have it in the evening. Or, you know, we're going to need some time when all of you are working together. And the thought was, if we do it on a Saturday, we could start at nine or 10 and just go till it's over. You know, set just a two or three hour, hour meeting. So I'm just kind of looking for some feedback if that's a date we want to keep.
Okay.
I'll get back from it and then lock it in. Anything else on the board?
What number reports, make sure you get the item. All right, um, now before we adjourn, we've got a stack of papers here that need to be signed. We've already, uh, so we want to make sure we get that. Um, so other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm going to adjourn. And move to the seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.